Thank you for that. Check on Zoom. I'm calling us back to order for our work session at 6:48 PM. And we do have a presenter in the room. Great. I was going to look to reorder the agenda, but I think that Attorney Phillips had a comment to kick us off here tonight.
Yes, thank you. During the break, I had a comment for clarification on what just happened during the election of the mayor. And I want to make sure that my words are clear. And so I apologize for not being clear on my comments. The mayor position is not an appointed position. And our statutes under, or our ordinance is under 1251, says that the mayor shall be filled only from the governing body by a majority vote of all council members. And so I accidentally said elected or appointed. And I apologize for not being clear on that. It is an election. So the mayor has been elected.
Okay.
Or voted.
Thank you. We'll all strive to echo the correct word use there as well. Tonight on our work session, we have three discussions and presentations. We're starting with the Laura Foundation update from Amy Vincent. Amy, it looks like we have some tech that come forward and we can start with the introductions while they do whatever they need to be doing. Yes, please. Yeah. Is the mic on? I think there's a little person's head to hit.
Is that it?
Okay.
There you go. Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Are y'all set with presentation too?
I think so. Okay.
Yeah. Thank you for being here then, and please take us away.
Okay. Thanks for having me. It's been a while since I've had the opportunity to kind of fill everyone in as a whole group. I have individual conversations here and there. But we just had a really busy and exciting 2024. So it felt like this was a really good time to just come in and like give a year-to-date update. And we'll sneak a little bit of what's been happening in 2025 in there also. So in 2024, we funded 96 total projects. Which is, in 2023, we funded 79. So we're moving up. And when we get there, you'll see that in 2025, like we are headed towards surpassing even the 96. And you'll see, you know, $715,000 into the Lander community. And this is all community projects, right? These are all projects that have been brought forward by community members. Mostly just like everyday people who want to help and just need a little bit of money to get going. And that is the thing that is consistently inspiring to me. Is that we live in this community where people are willing to roll up their sleeves and do the work to make life better for all of us in all kinds of different ways. And we're going to talk about what some of these 96 projects were that make life better for us. So a lot of youth sports, like a new volleyball program so that girls in particular who are wanting to play volleyball have the opportunity to learn and play before they get to middle school. Basketball for the younger kids. Softball, which I know, like you guys were made aware that like we helped fund the softball team. But that is always such an exciting thing for me because I know that those sports are the things that like help give our kids discipline and work ethic and direction and that teamwork and keeps lots of them busy, which is, which is good. So there were several of those projects. I, if you are around the clinic, Lander Medical Clinic, you'll see like flyers, free car seats. And I think they're in some other places around town too. That's just the place that comes to mind right now because Child Development Services saw this need of like, people are coming to us asking, where can we get car seats? And so this program has provided for car seats for three-year-olds, but it's also provided car seats for newborns who, you know, the parents are at the hospital and don't have a car seat to bring their baby home in. And now we have been able to give them a car seat. So just these like really small tangible ways to make life better for everybody. I mean, even our smallest citizens, right? There, we were able to fund this community science project that I don't totally understand if I'm completely honest, and that's only because I'm not a scientist. But, but the idea of it is so fascinating, like looking at, you know, we had all these fires this year. And we could see the smoke in the air, right? And if you look at your phone, the air quality index says one thing. If you look at this other, you know, the, all the different things say different numbers, right? Like, what do they mean? What is actually like safe to be out and breathing in? What is actually safe for kids to go out in? And so Jackie Clancher up at CWC has got this project going where this summer we'll be able to like, what is the actual like on-the-ground air quality in town? And it's, you know, community members who are the ones who are like doing the science part of it and then helping to like spread that information to the rest of us, which is pretty cool. The Push Root Community Garden has got some composting workshops that they have been doing since November, which I didn't know that composting could happen in November. I learn all kinds of fascinating things doing this job. There has been a lot of requests for sewing lessons, which I find to be fascinating. But folks who just say, yeah, my kid wants to learn how to sew and I don't know how to teach them. So a woman has like stepped up and said, I'll teach kids how to sew. And so we just like, this was one of the, the smaller funding requests because it was just six sewing machines, like starter sewing machines. So it was less than a thousand dollars. And these kids are like off in a way, like I've seen these pictures of things that they're like starting to sew and, and having fun. And it classes full. She's got a waiting list on her, on her sewing class. And then our carbon monoxide testers, like we just had a community member who said, you know, that family tragically passed away in Riverton. And we don't want that to happen to families here. How can we get carbon monoxide testers? So it was Ann Even here at the city and myself and this community member who worked together to get 300 carbon monoxide testers passed out. And they went out in a very short amount of time. People were so grateful to have that free access to keeping themselves safe. So like, as you can see, it like spans the gamut of things, right? We are, we are just looking at like all different kinds of ways that make life better, that make it worth living, that make it enjoyable to be here. Some of the themes across those 96 projects that I saw and that were most exciting to me is that we had, and I'll show you on the next slide. We had several teenagers that stepped forward with ideas. And I, those conversations always make me the most excited because, yeah, like we need our kids to be like invested in our community. And when they have the opportunity to like, yeah, I have an idea and I can help make it happen. That's just like encouraging them to keep it up, right? Like, and then what's your next idea? And what's your next idea? And you're going to be the leaders of our community one day. So let's like empower you now to do those things and to volunteer. So I'll show you on the next slide what some of those are. But the, the second theme that I really noticed is there is this trajectory of people wanting to share resources in terms of like tangible goods. So we have the Toy Library, which is housed by the Covenant Presbyterian Church on Fremont Street. And that's a, that's a program that we've been able to help support a couple of different times. And 2024 was one of those. But also, we have a new Resource Library in town. It's located on Sweetwater Street. And it is in a magical place where you can go like rent a sewing machine or you, that's where the sewing lessons are taking place. You can also rent a sewing machine. You can also check out, I shouldn't say rent because you don't pay for it. You check it out. It is like a library. You can also check out a microscope. You can also check out a didgeridoo if you were ever like, oh, I'm interested in hearing what a didgeridoo is. Or like other musical instruments, right? There's just that idea that like, we don't have access, easy access to some of these more expensive things that, you know, maybe you cost, you know, it's cost prohibitive to try it out or there's no place that, you know, lets you explore those things before you buy them. Like not, you can't even like just go into a store and look at it before you buy it. But you can now at the Resource Library. It's super cool. On Sweetwater, it's, oh, don't make me say the address. I'll get it wrong. But it's next to, there's that Baptist church that's on the corner of like, is it Second and Third? Or, or you mean Second and Sweetwater or Third and Sweetwater or something? Third and Sweetwater. It's right next to there. And they have a Facebook page. And that's how you like find out their hours and, and it's all volunteer, completely volunteer run. It's amazing. And there also is another, the Wyoming Wildlife Federation is starting. And I don't think it started yet. This, this was one that snuck in like right at the end of the year. So I don't think it's up and going yet. But they are starting a gear library for hunters. So, you know, things like, there are going to be things like backpacks and like the hunting gear, but also like meat grinders and dehydrators and like those kinds of things that you need to process the game after you've harvested it. Which I find really exciting also, just this like, yeah, let's pool our resources. We don't need to have everyone having one of these. So that is 2024. It was really busy. It was really exciting. It was really fun. And we started 2025, oh, first before I get into 2025. Here is just like the rundown of kids. So we had a 17-year-old who got math counts started up again because it meant so much to them as a middle schooler that they started it back up in their home and they are now a math major at Princeton. And their mom, this kid's mom has taken over math count. So we have that. There's a community dance team that was started by a 17-year-old. This pet education class is really cool. There's a, there's a, she's also 17. It's 17 seems to be like the magic number. There's a lot of 17-year-olds who like loves aquarium animals. This has been like her passion. And so she has created this course that is like really in-depth about like breeding fish and what the right pH is and what the right, you know, what kind of plants they need. And is like teaching kids, like if you want to have a pet, like here's how you actually take care of your pet. Civil Air Patrol didn't have winter uniforms. So these poor kids either couldn't do their duties or they were freezing. So we got them some uniforms. The, I love it when groups of kids come. So the boys swim team, last January, there were four of them that came to my office to ask if I would sponsor the swim team, which I just, yeah, way to like be responsible for raising your own money. Yep, that's right. The homeschool community put on this business fair last spring, summertime, April or May. That was fabulous. These, you know, we had kids that were making cotton candy and selling it. And there were kids who had made like elderberry syrup and were selling it. And all kinds of entrepreneurial activities. It was fantastic. And then the new water fountains in City Park came from a 17-year-old who, you know, had done a project. And that was actually one that I had secret, you know, I can't fund any of my own ideas. They all have to come from everyone else. And so that was one that I was secretly like, can someone please ask me to fund the water fountains? I would really love to do that. So anyway, just to give you that idea. And already this year, we've had several kids that have stepped forward with ideas, which is just so inspiring. So 2025, as of yesterday, when I finalized putting this together, we have funded 23 projects. So that's in the first, what, like eight weeks of the year, maybe? It has been the busiest couple of weeks that I have had in the three years since I've been in this position. And more things like being able to get the swim club some cool technology that will hopefully, you know, help them to compete on the same level as people with fancier pools. Gillette and whatnot. A snow groomer for the sinks canyon trails, which apparently like what they had was like giving people hernias and was really dangerous. And we, you know, as a community, we don't, I didn't realize, I shouldn't speak for anyone but myself. I didn't realize how those trails get groomed and it allows us even to just like hike them, you know? And so it's really a benefit to all of us, not just those who are fat biking or snow shoeing or what, you know? Anybody who's up there is benefiting from that. Poetry Tea Time is one of those from the, from a group of kids. This is a group of 13-year-old girls who found this book of poetry and were really inspired to create like a tea time for eight to 10-year-olds. So the 13-year-olds are teaching the eight to 10-year-olds poetry and, you know, talking about art and music and having tea while they're doing it. And that's another one of those, like, it's just a really small, it doesn't cost a lot of money, but it's giving these youth the opportunity to give back to their, to their community in a way that's exciting to them. And then working with the Popoja Conservation District on an invasive species treatment program where they're, they're working on, well, it's the Popoja Conservation District along with several other agencies like Weed and Pest to kind of eradicate the Russian olives, particularly around Squaw and Baldwin. And wanting to be able to give property owners new plants, like to take the place of the trees that they're losing. And so we are able to, to help them do that. And that's just, how many is that? Five, four, five? So it's, on a daily basis, exciting stuff is happening in the community at this really low level that I just feel it kind of like filters out to everyone else. And I hear these little bits of like, oh yeah, I participated in that class. Oh yeah, thanks for funding that. I participated in that. Which, you know, is, what is exciting to me is that I am able to encourage our community to keep standing up. Like I don't want to take credit for any of this work. I am not doing this work. I'm just helping the work happen. And I think that's all I have. Do you guys have questions for me? I didn't want to like take up too much time.
Yeah. Any questions or comments for Ms. Vincent? Ms. Councilwoman Larson?
Just thank you for all you do, Amy. You know, that's really appreciated. I think that you're, you and the Laura organization is just a great asset for the community. Thank you.
Councilwoman White?
Okay, I echo that and please pass on my thanks for the folks who started up math counts again. A whole bunch of the middle schoolers that have been on the ski team are really excited to be part of math counts again.
Isn't that exciting?
They're super psyched.
It's so exciting that kids are excited about math. Like, yes! Anybody else?
I'll add, oh sorry, are you, catch my eye? Councilwoman Larson? Yeah.
Happy to do it.
Yeah, great. I mean, I won't be redundant, but I'll, I'll just comment that I love the wide range of who you're reaching and accessible to and that you're working with churches and sports associations and people of all ages and, and folks of all sorts of different backgrounds for a lot of different, like surprising needs. So, thank you. And Councilwoman Larson, you don't get to bring the didgeridoo to the meeting. So don't even think about it. Don't tell them that address. Councilwoman Hall.
I would like to say thank you as well. It's awesome. Got stuff for the kids to get into and do and kind of keep their minds occupied instead of doing other things.
Exactly.
Yeah. It's awesome.
Yeah.
Good, good program. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll just check. I think that Councilwoman Cox had to attend to a family matter. But Councilwoman Cox, are you with us? Any comments? I think she had to go. Ms. Vincent, I don't want to bury the leads too far though. We have Laura Foundation in town for another year. Is that right?
Yeah. June of 26, the Laura Foundation will move to a different community in Wyoming, which we don't know yet. I don't know yet. They haven't told me that. And I stay here, but this is really my ask of, of the Lander community is that, you know, if we don't use this money, it's gone. We don't have a second chance at it. So whatever your idea is, even if you don't think it's a good fit, like come talk to me and let's see what we can do. Because I, I just want to see us real, as a community, you know, really take advantage of this opportunity that we have while it's here. And so far, we've been doing it. It's great. But let's keep it going until we don't have it anymore. Yeah.
Well, we'll send people the ideas your way and keep you very, very busy for the next year and a few months.
Sounds great.
Thank you for it. You're done.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Our next item of business is a discussion of the Table Mountain Assisted Living Facility, featuring our own Assistant Mayor. Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Thanks, Amy. And there is information in our meeting agenda packet and drive on this topic as well. Take it away, Regine, when you get back to your seat. Hopefully we're fair and equitable to anybody in whatever seat they're in.
Thank you. Okay. The reason I asked for this to be on a work session and it kept getting bumped to future and future work sessions, but budget season is upon us and strategic planning is upon us. And the staff needs direction from the council. This is not a voting item tonight, but we do need a, a head nod or we need to hear your wishes on the direction staff should take. So I'm going to back up a little bit, back to 2019. In 2019, the council at that time determined that, and had a vote, that the Table Mountain Living Community, it wasn't named at the time, but the Table Mountain Living Community Assisted Living Memory Care Facility would be city-owned and city-operated. Then decisions passed that migrated into allowing the Housing Authority Board to run with that program. The Housing Authority Board went and got donations, assessments, community assessments, needs assessments, health assessments, and did all of that as part of a quasi-governmental agency under the city of Lander. That's what the Housing Authority Board is. And then they went to get the final batch, $10 million of financing. At that time, it was found that the Housing Authority did not have statutory authority to run a assisted living memory care facility that was not dedicated 100% to low-income clients. That's not the goal of the Housing Authority and the council had set forth. So things stalled out. That brings me up to the update that was, and this is in your shared drive, the update that we gave in September 24th of last year. The Housing Authority Board did enough research. It didn't take any city authorities to do this research. And they said there were four possible paths forward if the council would still like to own and operate a assisted living memory care facility. One was a joint powers board. Adam reminded us that for a joint powers board, you need at least two agencies and we were just ourselves. So that was, that was, it sounded very like a preferable thing, but we could not find another entity because there's no public-private partnership or public healthcare partnership to have two sides of a joint powers board. That was not a viable path forward. City Enterprise Fund is a viable path forward. At that time in September, you said, okay, city staff, let's just get a little more information on what that would entail. It could go to be owned and operated by a new nonprofit organization. It could be owned and operated by private operators. So those were the four paths forward. Again, if the city wants to have a city-owned and operated assisted living memory care facility, a city enterprise fund is what is available to us as a city on a way to operate that. So then we go to the TMLC Path Forward Bullet List that I have in your shared drive. The first two items in that just show that there is still some funds out there that the Housing Authority Board and the city jointly went and gathered funds to do this. There's a small portion of those funds that are sitting in the bank that are going unused because there is no longer a construction contract for Table Mountain Living Community. I did want to let you know, we went and got some statistics from Westward Heights, which kind of gives you a snapshot of what the needs are healthcare-wise right now. It's not, the last time we did a market analysis was 2022. Now it's 2025, so that might be outdated. But I wanted to read this snapshot for what our local community needs. Westward Heights has turned away 14 applicants from their skilled nursing facility because they didn't qualify for skilled nursing and they only qualified for assisted living. That's in one year, 2024. In calendar year 24, they also turned away 16 applicants because they needed more memory care than Westward Heights could provide them. Memory care and skilled nursing are not always the same healthcare needs and they had to turn away 16 clients in one year for that. They currently have an 85% occupancy rate and their payer mix is 18% Medicare, 55% Medicaid, and 27% self-pay. That's, the only reason I mention that is because the Housing Authority Board was using local payer mix numbers of healthcare facilities to try and finance the, the new facility. So we were looking for Table Mountain Community to be 25% Medicare, 25% Medicaid, and 50% self-pay. So that's just a snapshot of the goals that the Housing Authority Board was going down when we were authorized to do so. There are some things that, the reason we need a path forward. The city is still under contract with Erdman, who is the design-build contractor. Since it was a design-build, designs have fully been paid off. All the grant monies that we received have gone to the payoff of all those bills, but the contract is still active. The city would have to, depending what they decide, either terminate that build contract or decide to build a facility. The land lease has been terminated. As you guys know, we did that back in October. If the council is willing to have a city-owned facility, then there's, there's a lot of information that's crucial. We still have, we, the city, still has a Wyoming Business Council Business Ready Community Grant for $889,000 for the facility. Business Council is aware that that may be turned back, but it would take an act of you guys at a voting session to turn that back and write a letter to them, to do that. The 2024 construction costs were 17.5 million. And that's just construction with no three-year operating cost on top of that. That's 2024 cost. Just know that. Again, there's no outstanding balance to the city or the Housing Authority on any of the work that's been done to date. All of the assessments are paid off. All of the plans are paid off. There is, there's a zero balance on the activities that that board has, has done. There are some, very few, I should say, funding opportunities if the city wants to go forward. Many of them are for job opportunities, not for capital construction. So going forward from here would have a challenge to try and find a construction cost funding. A new market study will probably need to be done, which would be additional cost. A third-party operator must be solicited. That is, three years of costs for running this facility after it opened was estimated to be $3.5 million. And that is because when you open a facility, you have to have full staff, but you don't have full residents paying the bills the day you open up. That was assumed to be three years. So there's an additional cost. If you go into an enterprise fund, you would have to fund the construction. You would have to get grants to help fund that construction. You may be able to get loans and there would be an additional operating cost in the beginning of a estimated $3 million. Revenue bonds are a potential funding source. That requires a ballot initiative and a public vote, but many people, revenue bonds used to be very But many people, revenue bonds used to be very, very popular with cities, and for the last 20 years, not so much. But they are, they are an avenue to go through. A special purpose tax is a funding source that the city could go for, similar to our senior centers in the 90s. They went for a special purpose tax. It raised a certain amount of funds. Then that tax went away at the end of that fundraising goal that was met. So that's another option. Laramie has a building authority, similar to a housing authority, but it's under a different statute. And the building authority actually owns the properties, and the city forms a long-term lease agreement with them and pays the building authority back for the asset. Brand-new idea, something you'd have to think about in the long term, but that is a possibility. City-funded enterprise funds, that could be done. So I guess what I'm looking for tonight is, again, it's budget season. It's strategic planning season. At your next voting session, if there was direction to either continue to do this as a head nod, and we will put funding in this next year's fiscal budget to continue to try and get a city-owned healthcare facility, or votes to terminate some of the agreements that we need to terminate if we are not going forward. Long dissertation, but I'd answer any questions.
I bet there's quite a few. Councilman Hahn.
I think, well, for one thing, I think it's a great concept, the whole situation. But for me, what's scary is we had some of the best minds in town working on this, and they couldn't, they couldn't make it work. We had many, many obstacles throughout the whole process, which is scary. I mean, when you're, when you're having that many problems just trying to get this thing off the ground, it makes you wonder. And I think the biggest thing for me, if, well, you know, you have Medicaid, Medicare, this is 50% self-pay. There's a lot of questions there for me, just with that, you know, reimbursement rates and all that. But the, if the city, I think the biggest thing for me, and it's always been along, if the, if the city has to, if they're responsible for the revenue shortfalls on this, on this, this whole situation, that could be scary for me. I mean, I look at this and, and there's, I think there needs to be a lot of things answered before, you know, somebody running the place and, and is the city responsible? If it was any other company coming in and just building this, and the city is helping, I mean, that'd be one thing. But to, to be responsible financially, I think that's a, I think that's a big deal. And, you know, we want a city park. We've got flood mitigation here. We got street, you know, streets and sewers and all this stuff. The other thing, I think the other question for me is, we got a lot on our plate. It's a lot to manage, you know, especially for the city staff. I mean, this is, there's a lot going on. And I think sometimes you, maybe you stop at a certain point. You know what I mean? So anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Others?
Yeah. That covered a lot of it, but also the, you know, you have the SF 0069 going through the House, and now it's back to the Senate. I haven't, I mean, I looked into it, read it and all that, but what's the, what's the revenue loss for the city? I mean, that's something else to think about if you have a revenue, a revenue loss through the city. And, you know, we still have all these projects on the board, and something new could put us in a world of hurt, right? It's.
It's a good point. Councilman Josh Hahn. Others, what are you thinking?
So, Regine, can you remind me about what the cost was for the feasibility study? And I ask because with these decisions, most of them needing to go to the general public, I think we would need updated information for that. So what, do you remember roughly what that was? Agreed.
Yes, and we paid for that twice also because we did it once in 2017 with donated funds. And then we did it in 2022 with grant funds. In 2022, it was $85,000. That was a market study and a feasibility study.
Okay, so thank you for that. And, I mean, certainly the construction costs are, that's a daunting price tag right there, for sure. And yet, you know, in terms of feasibility, there was certainly a population very excited for this, and that came up last night in conversation with folks as well. And also, as folks talk about the need to have more and better-paying jobs, this was also a project that was promising to provide that as well. It's on that, I'm of many minds right now of, I know that this is something many in the public still want to see as a near facility, rather than having to go far away for these kinds of things. And I like the economic benefit that it could bring to the community and struggling to look at that price tag, for sure. It's a big one.
Councilman Larson.
Yes, thank you. Like you say, the money is just a huge issue with this. But you was talking about the, the funding sources or the payers, you know, Medicaid, Medicare and the private-funded. Would, if this facility was, was built, would there be a mandate for taking low income? I mean, would that be a part of the, the project that we'd have to provide this, this service for, for everybody? That, you know, that, that seems like a very real option there or something that would, would have to happen. And, boy, I think that it would be, we, we were looking at, what, 14, 16 beds on, on that at the time?
Oh, now you're going to test my memory. 18 memory care beds, 22 assisted living beds, so a total facility of 40 beds.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And, that's just a high-dollar operation.
Yeah. I'll, I'll try and answer that question of, does it have to be or mandated to be low income? Again, the Housing Authority Board's goal was to have it available to all income levels within our 40-mile radius. That was their goal. That was their, their dealio. I will tell you that if it goes forward, you get to reset your goals. Funding is easier to find for low-income dedicated projects. And that means 100% low income, not 50% low income. Funding is easier to come by if it is a 100% dedicated low-income project.
And then that shoots everybody else in the butt that's, that's trying to.
Right, everybody else is still driving to Rock Springs or Cheyenne or Casper.
Yeah, yeah. So that, that doesn't make sense. Okay.
Sure. I see Councilman White, and then Councilman Dan.
Another question. Can you say more about the building authority and how that's structured? And the note here that a building authority can issue revenue bonds without a vote of the public sounds astonishing.
Laramie is the only one I know that does it. They established a building authority. And there is, I checked the state statutes. You can establish a building authority, just like you can establish a housing authority. And the benefit of a building authority is they are owning the properties and leasing them back to the public entities. So it's a public-private partnership. I, in Laramie, again, they've come up with, I can't remember what they own. Oh, their new maintenance facility. They bought the old diesel mechanic, Wyotech. They bought the old Wyotech campus. The building authority funded and bought the Wyotech campus with a revenue bond. The revenue bond by a building authority, it's not a public entity, did not have to go to a vote of the people. They just did the feasibility studies, put out a bond issue, and funded this project. They bought the Wyotech campus, turned it into a city public works and maintenance facility and mechanic shop. And the city is leasing that back on a 30-year term to eventually own the facility. But that's how it was funded. Very interesting. Similar, but not quite. There are quite a few communities, Gillette, Sheridan, Casper, that have enterprise funds that fund public facilities, whether it's the Camplex or the healthcare facilities or the Hogadon ski area. They have enterprise funds in their city so that, that management is done by their, their council, and it's in their city audits and all that kind of stuff. And they have goals for repayment of those enterprise funds. Will they ever be non-subsidized? You know, it would depend on the project. But there are many, I mentioned three just now. I think there's four more that I had on the list, where they fund enterprise, cities fund enterprise projects for community benefit.
Regine, I'm struggling to let go of this entirely because the need is so clear and, and the community support in the past has been pretty robust. And, you know, none of us want to imagine having to drive to Casper, Rock Springs with our loved ones of whatever income range we have. And so I'm trying to fight this sort of sunk-cost fallacy that you and I discussed earlier of what are we putting in already? And, you know, what point do we walk from this idea? But I, I think for tonight, I mean, apologize. You're not seeking the head nods for us to budget for the full construction costs. We're trying to think through, do we know enough now and what avenue to pursue? Can you clarify that, please?
I think you stated it well. And I don't, I don't know exactly what I'm looking for, but as a council, you task us with doing a little more research. We, as staff, can't recommend that you go forward or not. That's you guys' job to do that. So if you were going to go forward with it, it would be similar to what the decision was in 2019. We would like a city-owned, city-operated facility. How do we make that happen? And so I agree with you. It would be a, it's not a $20 million ask in 2025, 26. It is a ask for, should we look into what might be a bond contractor? Maybe that's a funding thing that you want to do, a revenue bond contractor. Should we look into a possibility of a new enterprise fund? Should we look into the possibility of, of getting the community passionate about a nonprofit or a private organization running this in the future? So it would be a, yeah, we are not jumping in for a $20 million construction project.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to clarify that because those are the numbers that pop to us first. And, and really what we're doing a head nod to is a future decision in, once we have a budget. If we say yes, let's put some funding allocation into either city staff time or contract consultant help into finding the information out in a direction we want to go. Then we also will see that in the budget and assess the trade-offs of that cost with other things and services we're trying to provide. So tonight, I think, kind of, we're trying to compartmentalize back those decisions that, do we, are we comfortable enough to say, yeah, we want to see in the budget some allocation of staff, I'm sorry, of, of our appropriations, frankly, to learn more? Are we still interested enough to spend some money to find out what of these options will make the most sense? And then, of course, as we prove budget, we can weigh that trade-off with everything else we have. Councilman Dan Hahn.
So, city-owned, that means, if this city owned, this means that if we have shortfalls, it comes out of city coffers, right? Yes? Okay. And in that case, and if we're gonna, if we're gonna, you say we can, we can, we can take shortfalls out of the enterprise fund? We can't?
You would have to authorize a new enterprise fund, and you would have to fund it like any other project. If you need to go get loans and grants for it, if you have a shortfall and you have to close the doors, you know, I mean, it would be run like any other business enterprise under, under a public entity. If that's something you determined you wanted to do.
Thank you.
Councilman White.
Thank you. I'm going back to my question of the feasibility study. I agree that there's community interest for it, and previous feasibility studies show that it's economically viable. But that was also at a, a construction cost that was about half of what's currently predicted. So that's, that's my concern, that to what extent does that change the business model unless the, the payer profile changes substantially or reimbursement rates change substantially or, you know, a very substantial difference in funding for actually construction? So that's, that's where I'm at with. I'm curious to see a feasibility study at this point to see, with this current construction cost price point, can it still work? I'd be delighted if it still showed that it was financially feasible. My realistic side says, I think that's going to be a hard sell.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Larson.
And, and the $85,000 feasibility study makes me gag, you know? It just, holy cow, you know, that, that's huge. I think the necessity for the, for the unit is undeniable, you know, with it. But I just really struggle to, you know, know if the, the people of Lander, if there's going to be enough of us up there, you know, that we can fund that thing ourselves. And I'm putting my name up there. You know, I probably got the first, first room up there, but.
Which, which side, John? Memory care or assisted living?
Wherever they'll let you have a dog. But, you know, I'm, I'm very interested, you know, if there's any way possible for it to go forward. But my goodness, you know, the $30 million for the, for the buildings, $85,000 just for a study. Man, that's, that's expensive. Just don't know if we can pull that off right now.
And that's what it costs in 2022. So if we put out a request for proposals for both a market analysis and a feasibility study, will it be $85,000 again? You know, I have no good handle on that.
Councilman Josh Hahn.
We paid that study fee twice, is that what you said?
It was done at two different levels. In 2017, it was done just for assisted living. And it was donations from local citizens. And the Housing Authority Task Force provided that, all outside of the city coffers.
Fee's so nice, we paid it twice.
Yeah. And then, then the second time, it was already in the Housing Authority, but we couldn't get funding and grants unless we had updated data. And so that was an RFP and an $85,000 bill that a grant paid for.
So if this is a city-owned facility, then the city is responsible for hiring the person to run it? Is that correct? So if you get somebody that's not that good, then we all pay, kind of thing? I mean, you know, just in a business.
And like you said, it would be run like any other business enterprise that the city does. So that's what you got to do.
Okay.
Councilman Dan Hahn.
Well, and the other thing to think about, too, is we're, we're also, we'd be going in business, competing against somebody else in town. I, I think, I personally think that there's so many different things going on here. And you never know, you know, you never know when they're going to change laws on, on, you know, reimbursement rates and, and, or even if they forced you into X amount of self-pay and, and all that. I, I personally think that even though we have a, a pretty nice chunk of money invested in this, I, I think we're better off. And my recommendation is, is to just let this one go past.
Thank you, and Councilman Dan Hahn. I mean, I think that speaks to the question I was going to ask, is that there's some new ideas tonight for many of us about building authority, special purpose tax, understanding how that was clearly very positive for the community in terms of the senior center two decades ago, three decades ago. So are we comfortable tonight saying, no, we're killing this project when we have new ideas that we've only just been presented at this moment?
Personally, I'd be curious to know, you mentioned before that one feasibility study was done by note, donations a second by grant, if either of those options exist right now. So I agree, an $85,000 or more from city coffers would be challenging to justify. So I agree, an $85,000 or more from city coffers would be challenging to justify. But again, if there's still continued support from the community and or grants, then I'd be curious to see if that's an option to determine that. As, as well as, I just don't know enough, bonds have not, as you noted, have not been something that's been done in the last many decades. So my familiarity, familiarity with the functionality, the whole process, time length of a bond measure, I just don't know enough about.
Yeah, nor, nor do I. The governor has the Y gap office. I could have them do a really quick search on grant funding or possibilities for studies. A revenue bond agent would come and present to you for free, right? Because they're looking for a contract. So there's a couple of options there.
Do we want to give a head nod tonight, counsel, to learning more and considering, again, we won't be voting on a budget, we'll have several times to review it, considering an allocation for that learning more venue or pathway that we'll hopefully have some answers on maybe another month, couple meetings.
I'm, I'm hopeful that there's still a means forward and I'm also not expectant to getting some more information would be helpful for me.
Okay. Councilman Josh Han? Any further? Okay. Councilman Dan Han? Or do you have any further comments?
I have information on the towns. Like I said before, we have, we have some spines, spines in that. It didn't work. It came back and it's just been a revolving situation that I, I just feel bad about this. I was hoping it would work, but I don't think it's going to, I don't think it's going to work out in the city.
Okay. Well, I agree. I mean, the picture looks dark at the moment, but there are enough new ideas here. I'm not willing to say no right now. And I hope too that council people, we take the initiative ourselves that perhaps if this isn't a city role, who do we know in the community? Private philanthropy, private foundations, private organizations who might be able to take up the reins here if they know the city is finding that window narrowing or there's less, you know, interest or more risk for the city to do this for something that there's such a clear need. But I do, I think, want to see, I want to learn more. And I, I'm hearing that we're somewhat divided on that, but because there's support for the facility, are we okay giving head nods? I think that we're going to ask the staff to continue to pursue and come back with some recommendations and possibly that budget allocation. Councilman Dan Han?
You know, there's talk and who's to say what's going to happen at the state, but they're talking cuts to, you know, maybe there's, maybe they'll make this work, maybe they'd be 20, 30, 40% cuts. I'll, my, my last comment will be, no matter what we do, if there's shortfalls, it will affect the city employees. Because if they're, if you can't, if you're doing something, you can't flow to bond and we're pulling things out of the general budget and we don't have the money to pay things, then you start cutting jobs and you could possibly cut benefits. That's the only big money the city has, so you have to think about that. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Han. I think I'll say without opening up a whole other discussion on that, there's, I think plenty else we can look at to cut before we look at staff and benefits. And let's have a clear picture where that shortfall actually will be. And then those will be our discussions another month or so as we look at budgets. Regina, you're not going to get consensus from us, but I think.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. Can I repeat what I thought I heard?
Thank you, please. Yeah, let's get clarity maybe this moment.
So not willing to commit any budget things, which means we're going to have to, you're going to have to vote soon, maybe March 11th, maybe in, in April, to turn back some grant funds that have already been awarded. So that's easy to do. You're still looking at getting more information, so you're not dedicating dollars, but you're dedicating staff time. Staffs can research some Y gap to see if we can get some more studies done. We could research what a building authority involves and we could talk to some revenue bond agencies and see what that would entail. So even though you're not giving budget to this, you want a little more staff time to it and that's easy to do. And I would ask you that you still keep this as a item in your strategic plan as we go forward. You know, in the next two months, we're going to be doing strategic planning. So what a great way to compare it to all those other things that we have going on. So I would ask if we could still keep it on the strategic plan discussion. So is that close to what you guys said?
I think it's close. I don't think we found a consensus on the first item, though. Certainly, I, I'm opposed to, I think it's premature to say, let's send back some of the grant funding on March 11th. Do we have a deadline when we have to?
On one of them, on the Wyoming Business Council, 889,000. That was for infrastructure and improvements to the lot and it was only to be reimbursed upon a construction contract and we don't have a construction contract. So that one is a pretty easy, clear line to say we have to give that one back.
Okay.
All right. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thanks for the conversation. That was great.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks, council for that. Our last item then is an update from the police department. Captain Wall?
Well, it's a hard act to follow. The dark windows aren't my favorite. There's a lot, honestly, that I could share with you. I know I've been asked a number of times, people are eagerly waiting the, the year in review that Chief Peters usually does. He has that. I do not have access to it. More importantly, last time I spoke, I had stated that we had six candidates that were one step through a three step process into a promotion. We've passed that now. Just to kind of give the council an understanding of what the process was, they were all tasked with reading a book called Police Leadership and Supervision, along with the current city police or land or police department policy, take a written test on that and then an oral board interview with a lieutenant from Rollins Police Department, a sergeant from the Riverton Police Department, Pro Tim Mayor Stubble, and then a file review and then a one-on-one meeting with the chief. The results of that, I wasn't here when Chief Peters presented the corporal job title to you. I think there was some confusion or maybe lack of information. The idea of the corporal is one step above officer, but one step below a sergeant, right? To, to give them progress and leadership to where we can coach them to be leaders. And I know that Chief Peters has been vocal about it. I've been vocal about developing our own people from the inside and this is one of the processes in doing that. The results of that, really, what they came down to is we have two people that are very eligible and very ready to reach that leadership role. We have chosen to promote two of them. In doing so, it caused a little bit of a restructure of the department in the sense of there will be a sergeant and a corporal on each side of the week now. We have three sergeants, so there was a position opened as an administrative sergeant in the interim of this. The idea is for each level of these people to continue to develop from the inside and grow from within our police department. One of the things I think I'm most proud of is Mayor Richardson was vocal that he believed we have the best police department in the state. I echo that. But that's everybody involved, right? That's the council, that's all of you, plus our leadership and our guys from within. Within the process, for me as an administrator, it was so cool to see our guys and where they were and what they believed in and what they saw and where we're headed. I'm extremely proud of all of them that were involved in it. They all learned a lot from it. They now know what, moving forward, what we as administrators want to see out of our people as we grow and develop. So there's going to be a small restructure, kind of some redirection. I've put some heavier weight on the sergeants that are current sergeants. I mean, they get paid a very healthy wage to be a sergeant and be a leader there. So I've added to their responsibility list. One of the other big changes that I made, to be quite frank with you, is they are going to be switching shifts every six months now. And, and the idea behind that is, what I have found is we've have five and six year officers that have worked five and six years of day shift only. That does not make them a well-rounded or well-versed officer as they develop and move forward. So every six months, if they're on days now, six months from now, they're going to do six months a night so they can see, think daylight, dark, everything looks different. Interactions with the community is different, the type of calls are different. The long-term, bigger picture goal is to develop all of our own staff inside to where we continue to grow and continue to be the best agency in the state. Financially, as that's your guys' job to oversee fiscally for us, for lack of layman's terms, we're getting two supervisors for less than the price of one. We'll be able to promote both of these gentlemen to corporal, move them into a leadership role and dissolving the other sergeant position that saved us about $46,000 a year just in payroll. So as we move forward and progress, this is, the goal is for our guys to be able to take steps forward and develop and grow as, as administrator and other positions come open, they're, they're learning and they're ready for those positions. Another big step that we've done is we are at the very, very absolute beginning of a mutual order of understanding with Riverton Police Department, Shoshone Police Department and ourselves on a multi-agency special response team. Right now, all of you are familiar with Sheridan and, and what happened to a friend of mine there, but if we had a major incident within Fremont County right now, it's several, several hours before we get a team that's trained and ready to do that to our assistance. I think probably with Mayor Richardson's passing, all of us as department heads or staff members should always start planning to make sure we're ready if, if something like this happens. And right now in Fremont County, I'm amiss to say we're not, we're not ready. So we're making those moves as well. City Attorney Phillips is involved. We're, we're going through the right processes. That's something that's going to come to all of you when, when we feel like it's ready for you to see. But a lot of our projection and the things that we're doing is all about forward movement and we're being fiscally responsible. I think it's important that you guys know what we're doing with our money as you're the ones that approve our budgets. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I, I can give you probably rough top numbers if you'd like them, because that's something that I track regularly as, as, that's how I decide if I'm being effective as a captain is I generally run the day-to-day operations and where we're at and our pros and cons and what we need to work on. I'd be more than happy to share numbers like that with you if, if it would be of any value to you.
Thank you, Captain, for keeping us fully informed about what's happening there. Are there questions or comments from council? Councilman White?
I, I'm really glad to hear that this kind of intermediaries, intermediate step is proving to be successful. It made a lot of sense when Chief Peters talked about it and why it's needed and I'm really glad it seems to be a fruitful transition to be happening. And I'd love to hear your top numbers.
So something that usually for me, it's bi-weekly maximum of a month. I, I review constantly where we're at for calls for service, our accidents, shoplifting, burglaries, motor vehicle thefts, DUIs, a lot of the stuff that we like to watch, violent crimes. I'll tell you just briefly, our calls for service were down 1% from 23 to 24. Accidents are down 27%. Shoplifting is down 20%. And with what's left of the shoplifting, the solvability rate is over 80% right now, which is the highest in the history of Lander. Burglary is down 7%. Motor vehicle thefts for us is down 47%. Ironically, I probably spent two hours too long trying to research this one because it doesn't make sense to me, but we arrested the exact same amount of DUIs in 2023 as we did in 2024, which is odd. Understand, this is Lander Police Department only, right? That doesn't include our DUI team when we're in Riverton and Shoshone. This is just us as an agency. Most importantly, our violent crimes for Lander are down 21% from 23 to 24. So for me to look down and see that we're going down everywhere is pretty impressive. Generally, you'll have things that go up and down as it fluctuates and that's kind of what I focus on to see if we're being impactful, if we need to change areas that we are policing or how we're policing them and then what we're doing. And overall, I mean, I'm super proud of our department. We're, we're doing great things. Our numbers are going down. I can tell you what has gone up. If you haven't noticed is traffic stops. But I want you to understand the methodology at least for me behind that is, is nowhere ever will I, or do I require any of my guys to write citations for anything? That is their discretion. I believe in education over enforcement. I believe that my guys making traffic stops and interacting with the public in a positive way i- is a reminder that we're here and we're just checking on you and we're watching you. And I think last time I checked, our citation ratio to traffic stop is we only write, write at 30% of them citations. So most of them are warnings. High areas, high traffic areas, I think when I started here, our highest crashes were between the junction and Ninth Street, which I think is very, you guys know that, right? And just seeing that our accidents have dropped by 27% alone is huge. So those are just kind of things that I watch on a regular basis to make sure that I'm directing and leading and putting people in the right places, doing the right thing. So I have had, I don't know if this is common knowledge to you, but I'll share it with you. Safeway is not a fan of reporting shoplifting. And I've met with the store manager a handful of times. I feel like I've made a little bit of an impact as they're starting now to report shoplifting to us. I don't think all of it, but I think some of it, right? And I just had a conversation with him that this is our community that he lives in too and raises his family in and we don't want to invite that type of behavior into our community. So he's starting to report them to us, which is nice. I mean, it's baby steps. If everything was easy and could be fixed overnight, none of us in this room would need a job, right? But that's just kind of where we're at in a nutshell with everything and I appreciate all of your support. Amy, is that your name? I, we've never met. I appreciate that you're giving the young idle hands of the devil something to do because that helps us a lot, right? We, we run into juveniles a lot and there's just not a lot of resource of, for us. So I like, that's awesome. Thank you for that. You know, everywhere that I've policed has had YMCA's or rec centers and things and so that's awesome for here because there's not a lot of that here. So, but I'm a, I'm a firm believer in open, more information is better. So I'd be willing to answer any questions or share anything with you that you'd want to know.
Those are phenomenal numbers. Thank you. And, and beyond sharing the numbers and that gratitude, thank you to the whole team for what they're doing. That, that clearly takes a team effort and a constant 24/7, 365. They're, they're working really hard and helping keep Lander the awesome place to live that we love.
Biased or not, I have the best group in the community, let alone in the state, but that's just my feeling.
Councilman Larson?
Yes, I want to reiterate the thank you there also, but just curious, you said the, the number of DUIs was the same last year and this year for 24 and 23. And that, that had you puzzled, but I'm, I'm assuming that these are not the same people that's doing the, the same DUIs over and over.
Well, councilman, I, I would invite you, I know you're a very busy man, but I would invite you, we meet with the governor's council on impaired driving quarterly. We meet in Riverton and, and that's one of our bigger projection pictures that we're working on as a state, but we're a big part of is what are we doing to help our citizens? What are we doing to multiple offenders? And to be quite frank with you, it's going to have to be well above you guys. It's going to have to be a legislature, a law change, right? The run of the mill is this, first offense DUI under a .15, quite frankly, is maybe a $750 fine, no jail, six months of probation. Like there's really not skin in the game. That's not a lot. It doesn't really start to bite at you till you're three or four in, which is super tough, right?
But when does it become a felony and they go to, go to prison?
So to, for it to be a felony in the state of Wyoming, they have to have more than three in five years or more than five in 10 years. So, and, and you can look back. I mean, I think the last one I arrested two weeks ago was. I mean, I think the last one I arrested two weeks ago was, he had a total of eight in his life. But as the years had spread, it just didn't match to make it a felony. So they, you know, the Wyoming statute's very vague, but in the sense of second or subsequent is what they add to it a lot. Second or subsequent, some mandatory seven days in jail. So it could be your second or it could be your fifth if you're out of the timeframe and it's the same punishment.
Oh. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions or comments? I think I'll just add in addition to the, the thanks that others have shared that when you talk about the reductions in those numbers and over the last few years, let's name what's, what we know, but say it out loud that there's been a real change in department leadership and style and a higher visibility and more out in the community policing the last few years. And so I, I know there's probably a lot of factors, but I would place a lot of weight on those for bringing the crime rates down. So thank you.
I think you are on the board and in these boards, it exposes failures within the department too, which is one thing that I like. But our ultimate goals that I give my sergeants every month is traffic safety, community policing and crime prevention. Those are the three things, right? I make one of their stances, they have to walk through schools once a week, all of them, all the schools. So they're comfortable with police as a whole, just not the SROs. Walk through businesses, make contact with people. And, and if you want to know the honest truth, we arrest people here for shoplifting, which is not a common thing in Riverton. One of the wins was shoplifting for Mr. Dees and a lady was arrested there. And her statement was, I forgot you get arrested for that here. I'm going back to Riverton. Right, wrong, or indifferent? That's what I want to hear in my community, so.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions or comments? It's a due chance. Thank you, Captain, for the update. I appreciate the, the moving of information back and forth. I'm going to call this meeting adjourned at 8 o'clock. Thank you all, council. Thank you for attending, everyone.